All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and bring the city council meeting for July 25th to order. Let the record reflect the starting time of 7:09. And with that, Clerk Swope, would you please take the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
President.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmembers Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present in quorum, and no members are absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, city council members, mayor, clerk, do we have anybody that we need to remember during tonight's moment of meditation? All right, seeing none, if you would please rise and join me and the council for a moment of meditation by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
You have the proceedings of July 11th and 18th for your approval.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the minutes from July 11th and July 18th.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We are to late items.
Vice President Wood.
And at this time, I would suspend Rule Number Nine to allow for late items, and Councilmember Spatafor has a late item. If you'd like to introduce that.
Sure. I'll just, it's the MEDC $1 million grant for which we have a public hearing this evening. The public hearing was a state requirement, so we're gonna try to do it all tonight, as long as there's no strong objection. So, it did come, we have to discharge it from the committee as well, but we'll do that later on.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to suspend Rule Nine to allow for the late item. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are to comments by council members and the clerk.
All right, do we have any council comments tonight? Wow. Okay, Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to announce the East Side Summer Fest is coming up. It's August, Saturday, August 27th at 11:00 a.m.
All right, we appreciate that. Clerk Swope.
Thank you, President Hussein. Just a couple things about the upcoming election. Next Tuesday is the primary. I do want to point out that about 45% of the people that we've issued a ballot to have not returned it yet. So, there is still time. We have 15 drop boxes throughout the city. If you want to use the postal system, I would recommend mailing it within the next day or two. And if you need to get an absentee ballot still, I recommend that you come in person to either my office at 2500 South Washington or here at City Hall. The South Washington location will be open late on Wednesday until 7:00 p.m., as well as on Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00, and Sunday noon to 4:00. And our last time that we can issue absentee ballots is up until 4 o'clock on Monday for those who are already registered. We do still, we do now have same-day registration, up to same-day registration. You do need to come in person to the clerk's office, and those registering on Election Day can also get a ballot, get an absentee ballot, and vote in person at the clerk's office without having to then go to their precinct, or they can go to their precinct. For those who want to vote at your precinct on Election Day, please go to Lansingvotes.gov to confirm your polling place. We have made many changes because of redistricting and aligning buildings to deal with some issues of school gyms that are too small for two precincts, church that closed, and many other location-related issues in addition to our precinct boundary changes. So, if you, if you need to check where you vote, go to Lansingvotes.gov. And I also want to thank, we have a stand-in. Our regular council intern is not here tonight, so Jules in the burgundy back there is with us tonight. So, Jules, Juliette McCag, so welcome. Thank you for being here and helping us out. And with that, we are to community event announcements.
We have an election coming up in two weeks.
Thank you. And seen, is there another community event? You have one minute to tell us the details.
Hello, everyone. I am Connor Holgian, and I'm here representing the Fourth Ward of the People's Council of Lansing. We are the People's Council of Lansing that have come together as a group from all sides of the political spectrum that feel dismissed and disrespected by our elected city officials. We are composed of one-
I'm sorry, is this, is this an event?
Yes.
Okay, you have one minute.
We are composed of one representative from wards one through four, with four at-large council members to mayor our city council. We aim to focus on the same issues that our own council members will vote on to showcase the true needs of Lansing and its residents, to give a voice to those that are being unheard. Citizens are the most powerful component of government, and we will work with you and expect a seat at the table. I would like to invite you all to our next meeting of the People's Council on August 1st at 7:30 at The Fledge Lansing at 1300 Eureka Street, and please like our Facebook page, The People's Council, on Facebook. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any other community event announcements? Seeing none, we will move on to registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters includes the public hearing, which is Item Two, resolutions and the consent agenda, and reports and ordinances. So, it's Items Two through 20 on the printed agenda. It does include the late item, but that's already up for a public hearing, so the subject matters are Items Two through 20 on the printed agenda. We'll give you another minute or so to get your sign-in, blue sign-in form to Jules in the back. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shaw.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. A few short things. First, I hope everybody saw the excellent piece on CNN about Lansing, talking about how Lansing is booming and the great things that are happening here. It ran on Friday at 4:00 and at 10:00, and then it ran all through the weekend. If anyone's interested in the link, we can certainly send it to you, but it was a very positive piece about Lansing nationally, which is great. I want to congratulate Kingdom Ministries on their, on 20 years. They had a wonderful elevation event over the weekend. I want to congratulate NeoGen and thank them that they're gonna be investing $70 million into our city. You all passed the brown field, and thank you for that last week, but we're excited to see that move forward. Congratulations and thank you to Walkin' Truth Ministries. They had a wonderful One Faith event over the weekend with a lot of folks there, which was very, very positive. Damn Jam was incredible, so if you weren't able to get there at Lansing 501, it was a lot of fun. At the same time over the weekend, Lansing Alive happened at Rotary Park, so there was just a ton of things going on, and it was a lot of fun. We also had a Leap art unveiling at Rutter Park, so if you haven't been to Rutter Park, check out the cool new artwork right at the entrance. We have a variety of things coming up. We certainly have concerts. There are two more coming. We have Francis Park this Wednesday and Davis Park next Wednesday. We have a Car Capital, we have a Car Auto Show, the Car Capital Auto Show, this Saturday downtown. And then, in case everybody doesn't know, we have National Night Out on Tuesday, the 2nd, where there will be neighborhoods all over the city that will be, that will be having barbecues and things like that. So, check out your local neighborhood barbecue and spend some time with your local neighbors for National Night Out, Tuesday, the 2nd, which is the same night as Election Day. So, go vote and go hang out and grab a hot dog or something and spend some time with your neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and we will start with Elaine Fishoff, and then Loretta Stanaway. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I skipped a step. As I said, Items Two through 20, and number, Item Two is a public hearing in consideration of the MEDC support grant.
Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, so this is a grant from the Department, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, for $1 million in CDPG, small business support grant money to be used for a 12-month period of time for small businesses within this principal shopping district that were negatively impacted by the effects of COVID-19. It is from the department, as I said, from the MEDC department. We had a couple meetings on Ways and Means. The MEDC does require a public hearing on this. Typically, we wouldn't have a public hearing for a grant acceptance, but we're holding that tonight, and then after that, I will move to discharge this resolution from the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you. Clerk Swope.
Okay, our first speaker is Elaine Fishoff, followed by Loretta Stanaway. Is Elaine still here? Okay, then Loretta Stanaway, followed by Michael Lynn.
Okay, we, during the committee of the whole, that the intention is to put this new public safety building on the vacant lot for McLaren's parking facility, and while that solves part of the issue of bringing it into a central location, it does not solve the issues of taking private property off the public tax rolls, or starting from scratch, building new, or buying land when we already own land and could be using the Southwest Office Complex for that. So, I think that there needs to be a little further consideration there. Also, it concerns me that the city is not legally allowed to influence the vote of the electorate on any bond proposals, but you've talked extensively tonight with the developers about them running a campaign, a PR campaign, to convince the voters to vote for this proposal. And there is no means for the public to hire a campaign of their own to say, okay, here's the pros, here are the cons. You're not gonna just get the pros from these PR folks. You're gonna hear both sides of the story without getting run over and railroaded into a vote. So, I think that's an issue that needs to be looked at. Patricia mentioned the 98 Milage, and that is certainly an issue for a lot of us voters. We remember the 98 Milage and the promises that were made and how they were not fulfilled. A lot of the issues that are being raised for this proposal relate directly to things that should have been done then and were not. And 24 years later, we're still being told we have to pay for them all over again. The logical thing, in my view, is to go forward with this in the SWAC facility's footprint with the McLaren parking lot as parking, to go in stages with the police and jail first, the courts and stations renovations second, and fire administration and training last. Fire administration was recently done within the last five years in the building in Station One. This needs to come down. It needs to come down into about a 20-year timeframe versus a 30-year. It needs to come down to about $125 million instead of $175 million. If you were using the SWAC, you could reach those numbers because you wouldn't be putting out money for land in a brand-new building, you wouldn't be paying all the interest for those additional years. And this still leaves us to deal with City Hall. After you get this $175 million approved, if you do, and get these buildings up and get these people moved out, you still have City Hall hanging over the public's head with another huge expenditure you'll be wanting us to meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Lynn, followed by Carrington Kelzy.
Thank you, thank you, Michael Lynn, South Side. Mayor spoke on Damn Jam. I seen you there, I waved at you, didn't say nothing, man. I'm starting to think you don't like me. Brian T. Jackson brought up a great point about the ARPA funds, and I think, I hope you guys have more discussion on that. The $25 million does seem a lot like a secondary budget. I think some of that money backfeeds misappropriated funds from our general fund, all the way back to our rainy day fund and so on. I just don't have any, I don't have any encouragement that you guys are gonna change that. You already took it back and came back, and that wasn't expressed then, Brian, I'm sorry. I wish you had have brought that up, or if you did and they weren't listening, that $25 million should have been across the board, improving our, our, our issues in the city outside of what your budget could fix, but I hope you guys do talk about that going forward. Secondary to that is, I listened to them speak again about the Milage, and I just, man, I implore you guys to just separate the two. We talked about, I mean, I was here, you know, week after week, talking about closing our jail. That's been a huge liability for the city, and now we're talking about renovating it with another $175 million, and we still probably got about a $18 million judgment that's gonna be pulled on us for Anthony Hulon. So, you know, I think we can get a lot more innovative. I hate to see the fire department again bunched in with LPD. LPD has got nothing but money, 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 money. One day, I was, I was training, we were just about to go up on the ladder, on the aerial ladder, and we had a malfunction, took it to the garage, and they told us about a week later that they put that ladder up in the air, and it just railed down on itself. Hundred-foot ladder that I was just about to go up on, and if it hadn't have messed up, that could have been my life. And they're, you know, they're fighting tooth and nail to try to get engines, and now we're, just, just normal stuff they need to be able to serve 25,000, you know, calls a year, and here we are giving more money to LFD or LPD for more things and attaching them on LFD, and I just think we could do better than that. And I know that you guys have spent a lot of time with them figuring all that out, but let's do something better. Let's be more ingenuity, more ingenuity to these thought processes and be more forward-thinking to get LFD what they need, you know, and to resolve some of these issues that have been longstanding. You know, I've only, I've been there, it's been eight years that I was at the department, would be this September, and, you know, we've closed down more stations than we built. I was stationed at Station Nine, and again, and what the chief spoke on about it making you sick, it really does. I mean, you come home after working a whole shift, and you're flu-like symptoms for a couple days until you get that stuff out of your system. So, I'm saying that to say that the public is not gonna get behind necessarily the joint venture here when we haven't proven LPD can stop doing the things that they've done out here in the community, and just bringing them around to social events is not gonna fix that trust issue. So, hoping you guys separate that, and I think that's all, man. Next time, wave at me, boss.
Thank you. Next.
Just very quickly, let me, let me first say, it's been maybe the last two or three meetings where we've had either half a gallery full of folks, or, you know, up to what we're, what we're seeing tonight. And as a council president, council member in general, truly, it's inspired me. I really appreciate constituent input, citizen engagement. As a matter of fact, you know, my day job is, I teach civic engagement, so I certainly appreciate you all being here. We do have, and I want to address this at the outset, so that we don't have to address it again, we do have council rules of decorum that as council president, I do have to enforce. And the reason why those rules were passed was that, so folks that are coming up, no matter where they're at on a position, feel comfortable to speak to their council and to be heard. And so, whether that be cheering, whether it be snapping, whether that be cheering, that type of thing, one of the things that we have encouraged folks in the past to do, and I think of a number of associations that have come before council in the past, is that at the end of their comments, if they want to show council that there is vast support in the gallery for whatever position they're taking on, whatever issue they're speaking to, that they ask folks that agree with them to rise in silence. And so, I would encourage you all to do that, but again, I certainly appreciate you guys being here, and I'm looking forward to the rest of your public input. Thank you so much.
Okay, Carrington Kelzy, Kelzy, and then-
Kelzy.
Kelzy.
All right. My name is Carrington Kelzy. I'm here with Black Lives Matter in Lansing. Specifically, we are here to say that we disapprove of how the ARPA funds are being used. And as you just said, if we need people to stand in solidarity, this is my chance to ask everybody that is against the use of the ARPA funds, as they are now, to stand up. If you are against this, please stand. I'm gonna take this time to speak for them because they were silenced. And let's that be clear. We are community members. We are people who are from Lansing. It's okay, a phone, it rings, it's life. But we are specifically here to say, if you, the city council, choose to agree with how the ARPA funds are being used right now, you are choosing to defund the community. $0 are to go to East Side Community, Community Action Coalition. $0 are to go to the South Side Community Center. $0 are to go to Mikey 23. $0 are going to Brand New Me. YMCA is getting $0. Powder Park Zoo, $0. For us to consider to not use that $1.9 million that we just talked about earlier and multiple times to put it back into the community is an egregious act. We know that you don't have power to say what is gonna happen with these ARPA funds, but you do have power to approve whether this is going to actually affect people in their lives. For you to not vote no on this today is to defund the community, the people who are on the streets every day, doing the work. I am standing here as a member of BLM because we are the people who didn't ask you for money. We didn't ask you for anything. We clearly told you, listen to the community multiple times. And as the people in the room that have nothing to lose because we don't receive funding from the city or from federal government, we are putting our necks on the line for this, for my students, for my neighbors, for all of the children who have lost their lives to gun violence, because we know that our elected officials know what we need in our community to have a great community, a vibrant community, a community that will live and be at peace with itself. And to agree how these funds are being used without the input of the community of Lansing is to tell us that you do not care about us. It's to tell us that we need to judge you by the fruit that you bear. And right now, the community of Lansing, Black Lives Matter Lansing, is judging you by the fruit that you truly bear. Nothing this administration, by Andy Shaw, has committed, has done nothing to protect black lives. It's nothing but show and using black people as pawns. And to agree with how these ARPA funds are being used is to agree with that. I believe what you have shown me, and what you have shown me right now, if you agree with these ARPA funds, you are telling me that you do not care about black lives. Actually, I got one more thing to add to that. Y'all thought I was finished. Two seconds. August 16th, make sure you look us up, People's Assembly. Let's go.
Thank you. Next, we have Kyle Richard.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight. I'm also here to speak on the ARPA funds, but I'd like to take a moment to just sit with that, because what Carrington just shared with us, that's where people are at. When it comes to ARPA, and I hear $1.9 million discretionary fund for Mayor Shaw, like what, what timeline are y'all living on, where that's even something to think about? Do we not remember when he first came into office? Do we not remember the tear gas? Do we not remember every time that the Shaw administration has excluded black and brown And it, everything with Mayor Shaw feels like a publicity stunt. Mayor Shaw wants a discretionary fund so that Mayor Shaw can deal out the money the way he wants to the people he likes. The strong mayor system in this city is a disgrace, and the fact that this council is incapable of standing up to one man is, is really sad. And I just hope that y'all are listening.
Thank you. And we are to the referral of the public hearing, Item Two.
We're gonna actually be taking that up later tonight.
All right, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. This evening, the consent agenda apprises of an appointment for Ms. Nelson to the historic District Commission of Reappointment, a reappointment of Samara Morgan to the Board of Public Service, the appointment of Joan Leanhard to the Parks Board, and that is, that concludes the items on the consent agenda. So, with that, I would move the consent agenda.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to Item Six regarding the 1931 abortion ban.
Councilman Spatafor.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. I would move the resolution, but first, I want to thank the council for taking this up this evening. Some of you may wonder why the Lansing City Council should even weigh in on this, but I believe that this reproductive rights are very local. When you start talking about rights, attacks on our rights to control our bodies, build the families we want, and access health care, Lansing has the second-highest consumption of Planned Parenthood visit volumes in Michigan. That includes all services, but reproductive health is absolutely local and very important that this body discuss it. Attacks on individual liberties affect every resident of our, of our city. Governor Whitmer and others aren't successful in overturning Michigan's archaic law banning abortion in any case, except when two doctors determine the life of the mother is at stake. Millions of Michiganders will lose access to body autonomy. By passing this resolution, this body sends a message to state lawmakers, our Supreme Court, and our residents that Lansing stands in support reproductive freedom and the right of our residents to make their own health care decisions. I do thank you this evening for your consideration and urge you to stand on the right side of history and support this resolution.
All right. It was moved, so there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And Item Seven, the bond proposal.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. What we have before us this evening is language that would be on the November ballot for the voters to decide whether they would bond for $175 million. This would be for a public safety building complex that would include the Police Department Administration, as well as the facility on Wise Road. It would also have a lockup. This would be looking at replacing Fire Station Nine, the training, fire training facility, the executive administration building that is at Station One. Station One would be renovated. Station Two would be renovated, and Station Six would be renovated. This would also have a 54A District Court Facility, and this would, again, the $175 million that we're looking at would be only if that's the amount that is actually utilized. This could be less than that, but it could be no more than $175 million. So, with that, I would move the proposal for the ballot language at this time.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Councilwoman Spitzley, then Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we, we heard the presentations a couple weeks ago and this week. The stars must truly be aligned because I am going to be agreeing with Loretta Stanaway right now, which is something I think we rarely do, but I wish, you know, we had this announcement that we were going to be using the parking lot next to McLaren, and we do have SWAC, and I wish, you know, I wish that we would have found a way to, you know, if we're gonna do something, put City Hall at SWAC or do whatever, but I think, you know, in my mind, that's kind of, that's my question, but I'm, you know, I believe in the voters, and I believe that the voters will be educated enough to do what they feel is best, and I will be supporting it, but I just wanted to make a couple comments in that regard. Thank you.
All right, we have Councilman Spatafor, then Vice President Wood.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. I won't repeat a lot of what we said in committee of the whole, but I had a lot of questions going into this process. I was a little skeptical after the first presentation, but I think the folks that presented here tonight helped clarify those questions, at least that were on my mind. Really excited to put this before the voters. I do think that we'll, we'll see some support from residents for this kind of investment. I think a lot of times, we get a chance to invest in our community, and this is going to be a long-lasting public safety investment that I'm proud to cast my vote for tonight. And I did want to just clarify to folks, the parking lot that is McLaren is a nonprofit. It's not on the tax rolls now, so we're not taking a piece of property off, off the tax rolls to build this. So, I think that's great. That's a win-win for all of us, and that's a great central location. Thank you. I'll be voting yes.
All right, so Vice President Wood has actually passed. I think that's what she was going to touch on. Do we have other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have Item Eight, the special assessment for snow and ice.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a resolution for action for a special assessment for snow and ice removal in the wintertime. It acts similar to, you know, the grass and other trash. If there's a complaint, well, back up the truck. Within 24 hours, you must, you know, shovel your snow off your sidewalks. And if you don't, you will be cited, and someone will come and shovel it for you, and you will be charged. And so we have in that, so we have the special assessment here before us. We had the opportunity for a public hearing and folks to dispute that assessment if they saw fit. And we did have someone come to committee who put forth a compelling argument that a portion of his assessment should be reduced, and the committee, in their wisdom, did so. We had a number of people who wrote letters, who were asking for relief. They did not show up for committee, and so, and those were not, those were not agreed to. Their requests for elimination were not agreed to. And so with that, I will move the resolution for the special assessment for snow and ice removal for winter 2021 and 2022.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Okay, item nine, the noise special permit.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a noise special permit by CND Hughes, which will allow for Pennsylvania Avenue reconstruction on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM until November 30th, 2022, in the area of Pennsylvania Avenue, right away between Mount Hope Avenue and Healthcare Court. We did have a public hearing on this. We did receive comment both for and against the noise permit. They want to have the flexibility to do work on Saturdays if they so need, considering the weather and the short timeframe they have to make the needed repairs. And with that, I would move the resolution approving the noise special permit.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item 10, the ARPA budget appropriation.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. As has been discussed earlier, this council received a proposal from Mayor Shore on spending the ARPA funds that were awarded to the city. This was referred over to the Ways and Means Committee, and as the Ways and Means Committee looked through this and talking to council members, there were concerns about where some of those dollars were being allocated. We had a number of people come in and talked to us about how they wanted to see the funds spent. They also brought in the Public Service Director along with the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief to talk to us about their issues. And looking at the proposal, one of the things that we looked at was the Fire Department and the Police Department. The, at the proposal that we originally received had no money set aside for the Fire Department. As we listened to their concerns, we realized that there were a number of unmet needs that they needed, which came to $2,780,000. Of that, and we heard some comments today about their engines and ladder trucks and things like that, we felt that $1.7 million would be appropriate for them. There was also need for additional turnout gear, as well as a fleet upgrades and some EMS equipment. With the Police Department, there had been set aside roughly $100,000 in the mayor's first proposal. Some of the items that we heard at Ways and Means had to do with a record management system, which is roughly $1.4 million. So we looked at some of the other items that they had asked for and came up with a total of $1.7400,000. There were also additional issues that came up from public service, dealing with the fleet, which had originally been budgeted for $2 million, and we had suggested that the potential of moving that up. Mayor Shore took those recommendations and came back to us with a second proposal. In our proposal, there were a number of nonprofits that had been allocated, proposed to have allocated funds to them. One of the comments that we as a committee had said was we were reluctant to pick winners and losers from that, to say what groups shouldn't be funded and what should. So what we asked was the potential of just putting it into a lump sum, and we also heard from various groups that had not been part of the process. We had heard from the LBTQT community. We'd also heard from the Latino community that as just two examples of groups that had not had an opportunity, they felt during the process to apply for funds. So what we suggested was that money be put into one line item, and that the mayor go back and look at, and we will have a resolution further on in the agenda, coming up with a process that would allow for a fair and equitable way that that money would be dispersed in the community, a process that then would be reported back to councilmen who received those awards. I, as I'm sure Councilmember Spatafor would say, as Chair of the Committee, we appreciate all the work that all the committee members did and worked on this, all the council members that reviewed this and asked questions and looked at the best way to utilize these funds. As Councilmember Spitzley has said many times, these are one-time dollars. We needed to look at how best to make sure that they were utilized for the community and that would end up making the, I don't want to say the biggest bang for the buck, but would be things that currently that we cannot do. We didn't have money in the budget to look at a records management system for the Police Department that they desperately need. We didn't have money in the budget for additional turnout gear. So, I mean, some of those things were very important to make sure that those dollars were utilized for that. So with that explanation, at this time, I will move the resolution for the American Rescue Plan dollars.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Councilman Jackson, Councilwoman Spitzley, then Councilman Daniels.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief, but I have a few things here to mention. So this is not to take from the committee's work or the mayor's recommendations or anything, because I know from reading and hearing from all you all that you guys really vetted it and put your best effort forward and came up with a lot of items that the city needs. There's no doubt about it that there's a lot of good things in here. We've heard, again, from all the departments of their needs, fire, police, everybody came up here and talked about what they need. And not only have we heard it recently, we've heard it every budget that I've been a part of council. We've talked about some of these items which are being funded, which leads me to my objection, is that when I read the plain language of what we are supposed to allocate the money for, there's four sections. And just to try to get through them, Section A, to respond to a public health emergency with respect of COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts, including household assistance, small businesses, and nonprofits, or to aid the impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. So A, right there, for the public health emergency that we put our police records in, that we put our laptops for training in, that we put public safety barriers, to me, that sounds like walls so people or cars can't go through. These are all things that were needed before COVID-19. So when I read A, respond to the public health emergency, the plain language tells me that it means caused by COVID-19. In fact, that's what it says. And B, respond to workers performing essential work. We've taken care of them. We gave them essential worker pay and all those things, and that's in there. But again, it's to respond to what happened because of COVID-19. And subsection C is to provide for government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of the state due to COVID-19 public health emergencies. So again, reactive, responsive to COVID-19. That's what Congress passed ARPA for, so that cities, people, nonprofits, small businesses, they're all explicitly listed in there as ways that we can spend the money. So it's supposed to help them. And last, to make necessary investments for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. This doesn't have anything to do with COVID. That's the only one that says no COVID. So when I look, I try to look down our spreadsheet here and all the things I've heard, and there's only a few things that seem responsive to the COVID-19 emergency. And this entire, basically, second tranche, if you will, is all things that the City of Lansing has always wanted and needed, which, you know, is okay, because it's gonna fill some of the things we wanted, but I don't think it's in response here. It seems like Congress intended the city, because Lansing is a city of people, nonprofits, and small businesses. I mean, we've heard from people here. I think the intent was to try to invest and help people, nonprofits, and small businesses come up from the pandemic as well. And we have basically, and I don't mean, I don't mean to be dramatic, but we have $50,000. The first half, $50 million. The first half was already spent, all right? And now, we have things we've always wanted, fleet, computers for the police, all these different things, and we just are left with a sliver for the mayor to decide which nonprofits, which small businesses, and the like, is gonna, I don't think it's gonna be a squabble, but everybody's gonna want some. So that's only 1.9 million out of 50 million, when the 50 million was designed for the exact same things that was listed here. And it's just also interesting that some of the things that are listed, like household, assistance to households, our attorney says we can't do that. But yet, things that are not listed, like laptops for training, public safety barriers, all these different things that we always wanted, aren't listed, but somehow, they're gonna get a big chunk of the money that's designed for what is listed here. So again, it's not a knock to anybody, but whether it's an 8-0 vote, or a 7-1 vote, or a 7-2 vote, it's probably gonna pass, but I don't think that an 8-0 vote represents the makeup of the city, because we've already heard there's a lot of discrepancy on what people want and what it should be spent for. And the fact that we're doing, I'm gonna call it a second budget, but it's really the second tranche here. We're doing a second budget, and again, we know that we need some of these things, and we discussed some of these things, and we allocated it in the last five years that I've been here. And lastly, and lastly, I just think that I'm gonna vote no on this, because I don't think it fits what is intended here, and I don't think that it's anything more than like a Christmas list of things that the city needs. And the city does need these things, but it's not designed to go where it should be. So that's just my rationale.
Remembered. Thank you. Thank you so much for standing. We appreciate the show of support. But again, if we could refrain from snapping, clapping, et cetera, I certainly appreciate it. I believe Council, Councilman Daniels. Councilman Daniels.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I have been on council since February 1st. I was appointed because I stepped up and stepped into this position because I wanted to be involved in this process. I, you know, being the new guy, you want to try to make sure that you're doing, I guess, you're making the best decision with, along with your colleagues, but more as a representative of the people. I am inclined to agree with Councilman Jackson, and I think there are so many things on this list that we need, the city needs, but I don't, I don't think that it's adequate to the people who need it. And, and so I think that I'll have to vote no.
All right. Do we have other questions or comments? Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Daniels for their comment. It's, the amendment was difficult. And I appreciate the work that was done by the Ways and Means. It was difficult, you know? In my perfect world, I would agree with what they said. I do agree with what they say, that the ARPA dollars should be directed a different way, in my perfect world. It is not my perfect world, okay? I'm, you know, I'm one council member, but I, my concern with the original proposal, and we're at a different proposal here, was because I felt that it was a, you know, proposal of winners and losers. And so our Ways and Means Committee worked very hard, and we have this pot of money that is given back to the mayor, which I think rightfully it should be given back to the mayor. You know, we, council, we've gotten a number of emails, calls, saying, why are you taking away our money? You know, we're hearing you're taking away our money. And so, you know, for us, you know, we were put in that position of picking winners and losers. I hope, in our resolution that we're getting ready to pass, is the will of council that the process to allocate these funds will be open and transparent. I've heard from a number of groups that the original process where these proposals, I will say proposals, these dollars were proposed, was selective, and that a number of groups weren't given the opportunity to apply for the funding. And that is why the mayor has been giving back a, an allocation, a pot of money, so that other groups can have the opportunity to apply for and receive funding. I hope that it is more open than the original process, and I hope that it is advertised better. I hear, and this is just for me, I hear other organizations, worthy organizations, who are doing the people's work, who were, you know, providing, you know, aid and service during COVID, never got the opportunity to apply for these funding. And that is the reason why council, in their wisdom, decided to say no to the individual allocations that were in the original suggestion, and give him, put the onus back to the mayor's office to say, you know, this is the pot of money you have. And again, through the resolution, that we hope that it is a transparent, open process that is inclusive. Nobody got everything they needed, but, you know, for fire, they are out there every day, you know, risking their lives and providing service during COVID.
If you disagree with it, why would you vote for it?
Please, please, sir. Please, sir. Thank you so much.
So they were, they were out every day risking their lives to provide service to people. And so I will be voting for this. I will be approving the dollars for, for the fleet and the dollars for LFD, and I will be approving, supporting the ARPA amendment.
Thank you. Vice President.
Vice President Wood, and then, no, sorry, Vice President Wood.
I just want to clarify again that the mayor gave us a proposal. There were a number of issues that we had with the proposal he gave us. Those went back to the mayor. The mayor then gave us a second proposal. So we didn't take away from anyone. We did, you know, he is the one that gave us the second proposal based on the concerns that were raised by council members during this whole process. So I, you know, sometimes we, you know, we use the terminology that Ways and Means did. We gave, you know, suggestions to the mayor as to what we felt and what we heard that was out there. He could have just as easily have said, thank you for your concerns, but this is up or down, you can vote this up or down. So there was an opportunity, and we had the give and take. And so I just wanted to bring that back around, and this is a six-vote item.
All right. Other questions or comments? And I'll just be very brief. I wanted to say, you know, first of all, I really appreciate the work that the Ways and Means Committee did. I thought, you know, what that group did really from the beginning of May to maybe mid-June was some of the most inclusive and, I think, transparent work I've seen since I've been a council member. So I certainly appreciate that. I also, in terms of the process, we've arrived at a point where I don't think anybody has everything that they want. And what's in before us really is a compromise resolution. I respect everybody, obviously, everybody's vote on this matter. Certainly, respect the folks that I've engaged out in the community. We've heard myriad, I don't know, just a different variety of input, obviously, from the stakeholders that we've engaged. In terms of the 1.9 million in the resolution to follow, should this be approved, what I think we're hoping with in terms of the resolution, and really the spirit of the resolution, is that it doesn't stop here, that we take a look at whether it be the mayor's neighborhood grants, whether it be the art grants, whether it be the grants that come through the HRCS department, but that we do a much better job as a city, making sure that we are inclusive, transparent. And then, again, where that rises to the top is equitable. And so we're really meeting groups where they're at, meeting their need, and making sure that we start to incorporate, again, folks far and wide throughout the city. Again, what's before us is a compromise resolution. If it is supported, it is a six-vote item, it is supported, then that's it. If not, the mayor will have to provide us with another supplemental appropriation. The money is, there is some urgency to this, as the money is set to be received in August, okay? So with that being said, we will... The motion has been made, so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Whoop, yeah, the motion has been made, correct? Yeah, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
So it passes 6 to 2.
Okay, we are to item 11, the ARPA allocation process recommendations.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. There was quite a bit of discussion about this as we voted on our resolution before. Again, this is a resolution from council asking that there, that the mayor have a fair, transparent, and equitable, and far-reaching process for those to apply for the 1.9 million dollars that is available, and that the council also asked that the mayor provide council report on the process of awarding the grants and who will receive those grants. With that, I would move the substitute.
So first, on the adoption of the substitute, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And now I would move the substitute.
And, sorry, on the substitute, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have items 12 through 15, our orders for make, save, or demolish for various addresses.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. The first one before us is 1224 Dakin. This was held a public hearing, came back to committee. No permits had been pulled on this property. The estimated value for repairs to this property was $63,974. It was red-tagged on May 20th, 2020. And with that, I would move the resolution for make, save, or demolish.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The next one that we have before us is 5017 Hughes. This property was red-tagged on April 11th, 2018. The estimated value of repairs for this property is $74,991.11. This property had permits that had been pulled some time ago and were outdated, and the repairs had not been made. With that, I would move the make, save, or demolish on this particular property.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next property that we have before us is 5019 Pleasant Grove. This property was red-tagged February 15th, 2019. The estimated repairs for this property is $79,170. There has been no contact from the property owner, and no permits have been pulled on this property. So with that, I would move the resolution, make, save, or demolish.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The last one, make, save, or demolish, is 3025 Mahoney. This property was red-tagged on July 15th, 2021. The estimated repairs for this property are $89,900. No permits have been pulled on this property. So with that, I would move the resolution for make, save, or demolish.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Just very quickly, Vice President Wood, I have a quick question. And so I'm looking at the 5-0, sorry, 1-9 Pleasant Grove. We actually have a property at 2206 West Jolly Road. It's right there at the intersection, Kitty Court, and Fire Station 6. We've been dealing with that for a very long time, and we moved that through on the process quite some time ago. And I've been told that the holdup is that we still don't have the utilities because disconnected. So before I vote on this, I'm just curious as to, do we know what the process is? Do we wait until that threshold's met, and then we work with the utility companies? Or how does that work?
It's supposed to be 30 days out from, if you have a make, save, or demolish for 60 days. Within 30 days, they are notifying the utilities and asking them to come out there and take care of the utilities. So that by, and apparently we're having some problems with this process, that by the end of the 60 days, if there is no action on that, and it is then let out to bid, the contractors are able to mobilize and take care of it, you know, as soon as possible. Now, that was a procedure that we had started some time ago with that. So we can double-check with Public Safety Committee to see whether that's still being utilized and see if there's some hiccups with that that we need to deal with.
Okay, I appreciate that. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have item 16, Quarterly Report on Grass and Weed Appeals.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. As council will remember, we just passed an amendment to the ordinance that allowed for the manager of code compliance to hear appeals on grass and weeds and make a determination of whether to affirm, modify, or rescind the violation. What we've asked is a mechanism from council that we receive quarterly reports from the department that they prepare that would tell us the number of complaints that are being heard by the manager of code compliance or is designated, and the, again, whether they've been either affirmed, modified, or rescinded, rescind the violation. So with that, this resolution is asking for that information from code, and I would move the resolution.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we have item 17, setting a hearing for SLU 1 of 2022.
Councilman Garza. Real quick, Councilwoman Spitsely. Which one? Yeah, yep. And just so, for clarification for folks, a rezon does require an ordinance amendment, and that requires a public hearing. But as does an SLU, but because our agenda is set up the way it's set up, you're gonna see the two issues in different parts of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is a setting of public hearing in consideration of the special land use 1-2022 at 109 East Randolph Street. The applicant, his name is Bruce Hicks. He wasn't there at our development and planning meeting, which met on July 13th. Susan Stackewich from the zoning department showed up. And basically, this is a special land use permit for a state-licensed adult foster care, a large group home for the aged. The proposal is to provide around-the-clock care for up to 20 senior residents. The existing land is vacant convent. The property size is 16,296 square feet, just above a third of an acre. The variance is not expected to have a negative impact on the vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. No impact on public facilities, as the state is already adequately served. All necessary utility, street access, on-street parking, and no new construction is proposed for the site. It's merely a reuse of existing building, and thus will have no impact on the natural environment. Let's see here. They are, they're saying that most likely only 17 beds would be used out of the 20. It's a conditional purchase agreement as of right now. And they notified the neighbors within 300 feet of this facility, and they had one letter against it. Everybody else was in support, and it was unanimous from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So with that, I would move to set the public hearing for August 22nd.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to set a public hearing for the 22nd of August. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have the late item for the MEDC Support Grant.
Councilman Spatterford.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would move that the committee of Ways and Means be discharged of the resolution dealing with the MEDC 1 Million Dollar Grant.
I think, I think you can just discharge as, or do we need, do we need to vote on that? I believe you can just discharge.
I think, as the chair, I think I can.
All right. So there is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? So on the motion to discharge, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and now I would move the resolution for the $1 million MEDC grant acceptance for the CDBG Small Business Support Grant for the Principal Shopping District A.
Sorry. There is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, I understand the report has been pulled, so we are to introduction of ordinances. And Councilmember Garza introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Code of Ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section, 888.32, for the purposes of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for 76 low-income multifamily dwelling units in a project known as Walter French pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of 1966, Public Act 346 of 1966 as amended, MCL 125.1401. It's act, the ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So this is setting a public hearing in consideration for the payment in lieu of taxes for Walter French at 1900 South Cedar Street. Development and Planning Committee met on July 13th, where Mickey Droste from the Capital Area Housing Partnership presented to us. This is, this is a 4% pilot. 4% of rents received, less utilities as payment in lieu of taxes. This is a term of 20 years on this commercial property. It's a multifamily affordable housing development that provides 76 units of rent, restricted affordable housing for families at or below 60% of the area median income. The development consists of 39 one-bedroom units, 31 two-bedroom units, and 6 three-bedroom units, between 650 and 1,250 square feet. The development includes a furnished community room and a gym for residents. This went up from a 6% to a 4%, I'm sorry, went from a 6% to a 4% pilot. Overall, project went up $600,000. And the current request is for 4% 20-year pilot, allows for increased construction financing, and along with $607,868 of deferred development fee, the project will be able to move forward. The loss of the revenue to the city to grant this 4% pilot versus 6% pilot over the 20 years is $202,040. The project is consistent with the city's master plan and form-based code. The total project cost is $25,542,826. And with that, I would move to set the public hearing for August 8th, I believe.
Yep, that's it. All right, there's a motion on the floor to set a public hearing for the 8th. Is there further discussion? Councilwoman Spitsely.
And I know Councilmember Spatterford was looking for me, but I have a question procedurally. So they already have a 6% pilot. Didn't we vote on it? We voted on a 6%? Right, so my question is, do we amend the existing ordinance? Or is this a new ordinance?
It looks like...
The way that it's drafted, this would be a new ordinance.
So what do we do?
There's a repealer section as well.
Section 2.
Yeah, section 2 is a repealer for the old ordinance.
That was, thank you, I didn't...
Appreciate you looking into that. Are there other questions, other concerns? All right, so again, this would be to set a public hearing for August 8th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And next, we have the Committee on Development and Planning introduce the following ordinance of the city of Lansing for amending the Code of Ordinances by providing for the rezoning of property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1242.02 of the zoning ordinance for property located at Z1 2022, 109 East Randolph Street from R6A Urban Detached Residential to RAR Residential Adaptive Reuse. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Sure, and so this is the item that we spoke to earlier, actually, just a few moments ago. And in order to actually execute the proposed use at 109 East Randolph, we would both need a rezon and then a special land use permit. So with that being said, Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, so this is just setting a public hearing for rezoning the R-6A Urban Detached Residential to a RAR Residential Adaptive Reuse. And with that, I'd move to set the public hearing for August 22nd.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to set the public hearing for August 22nd. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are back to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. You'll have up to three minutes to speak on any item related to the operation or governance of the city. It's a yellow sign-in form, and if you haven't had the opportunity, we'll give you about another minute to jump up and grab jewels and sign in. And with that, we are to reports of city officers' boards.
Just real quick, sir, are you wanting to make public comment?
Yes, sir.
If so, if you could work with, yep, Jewels in the back. Oh, he's good. Okay, so we'll actually call you down when we're ready. Thanks so much, though.
Okay, reports of city officers.
Oh, sorry, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We have items from the city clerk, minutes of the boards and commissions.
Sorry. Place on file.
And a liquor license, Old Bag of Nails Pub.
City operations.
We have items from the mayor, two items related to Z two of two thousand and twenty-two for rezoning of West Mill Road.
Yeah, both will go to development and planning.
And two items relative to Z three of two thousand and twenty-two, a rezoning on Aurelius Road.
Those will go to development and planning as well.
Two items related to payment in lieu of taxes for Stadium North Family Loft Units.
Development and planning.
And two items related to the payment in lieu of taxes for the Stadium North Senior Lofts.
Development and planning.
Grand acceptance for cities for financial empowerment.
Ways and means.
The reappointment of Kenrick Hall to the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority.
Committee of the whole.
The appointment of Jennifer Hines to the Downtown Lansing, Inc. Board.
Development and planning.
Two items relative to Summit Street Development, obsolete property rehabilitation district.
Development and planning.
We have a ballot proposal, a request from Lansing Township residents to be annexed to the city area, area A.
Committee of the whole.
And another ballot proposal, a request from Lansing Township residents to be annexed to the city area B.
Committee of the whole.
And communications and petitions, communication from Elaine Fishoff regarding the Board of Waterlight Rules of Procedure.
Committee of the whole.
Communication from Rachel Elridge regarding the ARPA funding.
Committee of the whole.
Notes from Liquor Control, G.G. Holding, request to transfer license.
City operations.
And the claim appeal from Mark Quinn for nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars in trash fees at seven thirty-five Chicago.
City operations.
We are to remarks by council members.
We have other council remarks.
All right. Our remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
I do have one. You all probably saw the, the citizens of Lansing Township have requested annexation. We received the petition. We put together resolutions and sent them your way. I've gotten a few questions already. Councilmember Wood provided some. Mr. President, you provided a few. If anyone has any questions, we're certainly trying to research and answer the questions as fast as we can. So if anybody has any questions, please send them to Mark, and we can do our best to get the answers. Certainly, this is not something that we initiated, but we will respect the request of the residents, which is why we sent it to you, and now it's up to you from there. If it, if it is approved by council on the eighth, then it would go on the ballot for November, and the citizens would decide. So we'll, we'll continue to work on questions, whether with legal or with finance, with our assessing. They've all been involved as we've been looking at all of this. So if you have questions, just send them, send them to Mark, and we'll, we'll try and kind of compile a list and see what answers we can get for you by the eighth or on the eighth. Thank you.
Okay, and just for clarification, if that was to put, just for clarity, I think we know what you meant, but if that was to be placed on the ballot, the citizens within that area to be annexed would be the ones voting. And then the second piece is, I did send out an email to everybody on council, that if you have, because what we're being asked to do is to not only take a look at this committee of the whole on the eighth, but also approve later that night on the eighth. Because again, we have to, in terms of placement on the ballot, we have to actually get this to the county clerk by August sixteenth at four P.M., should we see fit to move forward with it. So what I'm asking you all to do is to send any questions that you have directly to the mayor, and please copy our office manager, Sherry Bulke, so that she can compile a comprehensive list of both those questions, and then also answer so that we can all be in receipt of those prior to that meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Shannon Norris, followed by Jerry Norris. Each speaker has up to three minutes. We do have quite a lot of speakers, just to let you know.
Hi, my name is Shannon Norris. For more than a decade, I've served Lansing in various ways, from educator to basic needs provider, to community event planner with a purpose, always for the community. I advocate for individuals and groups of people, young and old alike, specifically people living in poverty and below the Alice threshold, where one mispaycheck can cause financial disaster. I tend to the emergencies caused by you guys, by city council, by the mayor, by the committees and the commissions appointed by the mayor. The committees and commissions are stacked with the wishes and wants of the mayors, with the head nutters, the back slappers, and the gym buddies. I started paying attention to who was causing the emergencies. I teach my students to watch, and I've been telling them, you're going to have to grow up and fix it because we've screwed it up, and I'm not sure how long we'll make it. The contracts that get awarded, the contracts that get awarded where horrible unsafe work practices are the norm. Anyone can look at Waverly Price or Leroy Fro and see where the rad money's being spent, the faulty electricity, the faulty plumbing, and residents getting blamed that it's their fault that their, their range went out for the third time. It's because they're a bad housekeeper. They're not being cleaned. It's their fault. Go check it out. The HRCs grants awarded to the Continuum of Care Core Group that writes the gaps need surveys, and then writes the grants to fill the surveys, and gets awarded the grants, the same hands, getting the same money over and over again. Some of the applications, I believe, were even incomplete and still awarded. I see the disregard of the public opinion on just about everything, from gun violence advocacy groups to how open space is managed. Lately, I've been appalled. I've been finding myself at Lansing Housing Commission meetings where I never thought I would. I've been appalled to watch, to present evidence in photos, in testimonies, in videos of the lack of care that we've been showing residents. Some residents have been, there's a lady who's been living in an LHC house since nineteen eighty-nine, never had new paint, among other things that are worse, like doors not opening, windows boarded up with people living inside them. This is all public, and you can get it from me at any time. Some of you have gotten my email. Actually, Mayor Shore, you included a couple of your board members up there, your city council members, when I was going after this conversation with Lansing Housing Commission. We convinced the LHC board to postpone their application to HUD on June twenty-eighth, and two weeks later, Doug Fleming called an emergency meeting, did his sales pitch again, and we went from a three to two vote, flipped to not passing it, waiting, and then we had Hall flip. One last thing. Ms. Spitzley, it was really weird how you came there, and, and even though city council is not supposed to be involved and has no control, you showed up.
Thank you. Next, we have Jerry Norris, followed by Kelsey Hudson.
I'm Jerry Norris. I'm with the Fledge. In two thousand and fifteen, when I started the Fledge, I had come back from traveling all over the world, helping people in other communities eliminate food safety problems or different labor problems that might have been happening in the Middle East, and I found myself with a gap where I wasn't fighting poverty in my own city. So I started this fight against poverty, thinking that it would be about entrepreneurialism, about all of the innovative things we all talk about. And what I found is that every day, we're dealing with basic needs. We don't have dreams of leisure and prosperity and all of that. We're dealing with basic needs, safety, security, food, and shelter. I had to pull my wife into this work. We both gave up careers to do this work. I thought I could do it without pulling her in. I have to pull her in. And, I mean, seven days a week, and sometimes twenty-four hours a day, phone calls at three A.M., always fighting for basic needs, and realizing that poverty never takes a break. People in poverty don't get breaks. I've always heard poverty is a policy decision, but I never truly understood that. So a couple months ago, I decided to study our government, our corporations, our institutions. I looked at housing, food insecurity, employment, economic development, the HRCs, the LHC, et cetera, and all I saw was inequity. You know inequity is the number one cause for gun violence? Equity comes from inclusion, not a committee, not a policy, not assessments, not boards, inclusion. And inclusion comes from inviting and welcoming. Inviting means distributing widely and making it accessible for all. Welcoming includes following a professional and courteous equitable RFP process, processes that are transparent in every step of the way. There are standards for this. You can implement this. You don't have to do audits and assessments and all these other things and measure it to death. Just implement it. You have a very competent, innovative, entrepreneurial, problem-solving community that is here, ready to help. It said that on CNN, right? I couldn't find the article, but I'm going to find it. Why are we booming? We're not the people you're proud of. We're the people you want to move. That's what I got out of tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelsey Hudson, followed by Kyle Richard.
Hello. I'm not sorry that you're uncomfortable tonight. I think that we're, what John Lewis probably would call, good trouble. I don't have a scripted speech or a thought process of just a couple points. I'm torn, because I think what is happening tonight is really beautiful. I think people coming together is really beautiful and important because we pay you. We pay you to do your job. I've come here many times and just felt really defeated, and it's wonderful to see the support and the people of Lansing standing up. At the same time, I feel great amounts of grief, a great amount of grief, because y'all still are not having hybrid meetings. Like, we're not the only city, but like, the hybrid meetings are happening in other cities in Michigan. Like, I'm disabled, and I'm here sometimes when I'm able to be, but there are some people who cannot be. You're also excluding single parents, the working class, people who are struggling with addiction, or have lost a family member to gun violence. You're excluding so many people, and you're benefiting from that. You're benefiting from that. And so I sit with this polarity of, this is wonderful, and I'm like disappointed, and it feels like we're doing the work. Like, we should not have to come here and yell at you to do your job. So yeah, we're going to make you feel uncomfortable. That's what this is. There should be more people who should say what they're going to need to say. And it's funny, because I, sometimes I call, going to these meetings as like unsexy activism, because you're, you know, listening to motions being pushed to different committees and all these different things, but like, this is what will be, pictures will have or whatever on the media of, there's a ton of people here. There are a lot more people that if they had the link, if they had the access, that would be here. And I just, I'm exhausted. There's a lot of exhaustion in this room, but in particular, that's my frustration. I've been coming here for over a year, when I'm physically able to do that. You, like, I would be here every week yelling at you, or whatever, like every meeting. But we're here, and there are more people who should be here, and I'm sick of doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kyle Richard, followed by Carrington Kelsey.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I definitely, it's like Kelsey said, it's nice to see how many people came to participate and be witness to this meeting today. It's very different from the July eighteenth Brownfield meeting. The special meeting for the Brownfield was, you know, personally, I, I watch, I, I'll watch the Lansing City Council on YouTube, and I'm like, what's this? Is it a three-minute city council meeting? What's this about? And I watched it, and it took the first half to introduce everybody, do the meditation, do the pledge of allegiance, and then the second half was to, you know, pass this neo-gen expansion. And my, I mean, my understanding is that the way that Brownfield plans work is you can actually take tax dollars that are supposed to be going to the schools. And so, it's just like, yes, oh, cool, we created, we're creating sixty to a hundred jobs. I'm sure that Mayor Shore said this was common sense. It's not. I don't, I personally don't think that common sense exists on Morse River Drive. I, I, with regard to the, the ARPA vote today, I appreciate Council, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Daniels, if you're no votes on that. Councilmember Spitzley, I, I'm a big believer that the words we use build the world we want to live in. And I understand that it's not a perfect world. There are material conditions that it is, that are not, that are imperfect. We are imperfect beings. But when we say, well, it's not a perfect world, so gotta, gotta, gotta keep moving, gotta keep that ball rolling, right? If we don't, we can't slow down. As, as a socialist, I personally think it's important to think about the relationships we have with one another and how we engage with one another. And the fact that, I mean, this current city council system isn't great. Come, be having to come down here and do this. I'm going to echo Kelsey on the hybrid meetings. I, it's clear that, the six to two vote today, it's clear that y'all aren't listening. It's clear that y'all are on your own mission, and, you know, if people, if people are going to come to the meeting that's scheduled, I guess, I guess we'll see you there if you come. So have a good one.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrington Kelsey, followed by Robert Rue. And Robert. Rue, Rue? I, I apologize.
Bob Rue. I live in the Grossbeck area of Lansing, and I'm here to talk about this proposed annexation. I was looking at the state law, and one of the things that struck me is that the indebtedness and liabilities of every township, a part of which shall be annexed to a city, shall be assumed by the city to which the same is annexed. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but to me, that means that we take on the debt that these areas of Grossbeck that are in Lansing Township owe. Now, the amount that I've seen in the papers, that Lansing Township as a whole may owe was some, somewhere between thirty-two million and two hundred million. To me, back-of-the-hand calculation, that means that these areas that you're going to try and annex owe between eight million and fifty million dollars, and that's what you're proposing to take on. So I have three specific questions. What's the exact amount of debt that Lansing will assume if these areas are annexed? Second question, assuming that there's some non-zero amount of debt, how will Lansing pay for this debt? Will we be increasing property taxes? Will we be increasing income taxes? Or will we be suspending city services? Third question, why does your sample ballot proposal have absolutely no mention of any of the financials involved? If you're going to put something in front of the voters, please be honest and tell them what it's going to cost. And last observation, based on all the speakers that have come before, there's not enough money. So why would you take on a massive debt when you can't even find money to pay for the things that people need? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Washington, followed by Norma Bauer.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much. I am Jody Washington. I live on the east side of Lansing in the first ward. I am a member of the People's Council. We are here because we- We are here because we love our city and her people. However, we have become weary of voicing concerns only to be met with empty words of acknowledgement in an attempt to placate us. It is merely an illusion of concern. We are serious about being heard and working together toward meaningful solutions for issues and concerns affecting the citizens of our city. We have found it necessary to find an alternative venue for the purposes of marching forward to move our city to the best she can be for all that live and work here. We are dedicated to ensuring that our city and our local elected officials work for the people with the people. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce the People's Council representatives that the people of this group have elected. Also are present, also present are supporters that actively believe in this mission. We do look forward to working with you, and we hope that you will give us a seat at the table and truly listen to what we have to say. First Ward Representative, Julia Miller. Second Ward Representative, Zero Q. Third Ward Representative, Marlon Beard. Fourth Ward Representative, Connor Holgan. At Large Representatives, Carter Brown. Clarita Duckett Freeman, Dwight Evans, and myself. We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Norma Bauer, followed by Abby Denu.
Good evening, and thank you for serving on this council. I know largely it's a thankless task. And thank you also to all the people who came tonight who pay attention to what happens here, because we all believe in democracy, rule of the people, by the people, and for the people. I'm coming from experience that my sister told me about in Oxnard, California, where she, like I, talked to everybody she could about misappropriation of HUD funds. They were not going to the purpose that HUD exists for, to provide safe, affordable, accessible housing to people in Oxnard. And it wasn't happening because the mayor in that city had a cozy relationship with the contractor to build a lot of high-end housing out in the suburbs. And no doubt, he got something out of it. And so HUD looked into it, found that her allegations were true, and so she no longer had to talk to everybody about this. They went in, they found it was true, and they threatened to withhold millions of dollars from the city of Oxnard, California. Guess what? The city listened to them, because they didn't want to say goodbye to millions of dollars. And I'm pretty sure Lansing wouldn't like to say goodbye to millions of HUD dollars also. So if the council would simply look at code violations in the properties that LHC owns and find that they have validity, then maybe you could decide to issue some kind of statement in which you find the LHC in default, or, you know, that you're against their method of, quote, managing, unquote, meaning they fail to manage the properties that they own. Because then you would be proactively giving evidence for HUD that they should threaten to withhold funds and direct them to house returning citizens, people with disabilities, people who are impacted by homelessness, instead of living in rat-infested places with code violations and black mold that's not addressed for years. All because of promises made by a guy who's got a cozy relationship with the corporation that plans to buy the property now. And he did a lot of fast-talking acronym-throwing statements about promises that he can't fulfill, like promising to convert all those units into Section 8. Well, if wishes were horses, beggars would ride. You fooled me once, don't fool me twice. There's something wrong with that proposal. And I hope you will stand with the people of Lansing who live with these horrendous conditions that have killed people, as Mike Lynn can attest to when he went to, as an EMT.
Thank you. Next, we have Abby Denu, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, everyone. I'm Abby Denu, and I am a local business owner. I own Sunset Clay Studio in the northwest part of town, out there by the sewage treatment plant at the end of Sunset Avenue. And I came here tonight to support the People's Council and Black Lives Matter. I don't come to city council meetings very much. I'd love to get more involved, but I have a disabled child, and I too am a disabled person, an autistic woman, who spends most of my time, you know, working at my studio and out in nature. So I actually want to bring to your attention an ecological disaster that is happening in mid-Michigan that we all need to be aware of. And I don't know if any of you have a familiarity with the native species that live in our great state of Michigan. They give me a great sense of pride, the trillium, the Dutchman's breaches. Right now, flowering is bee balm, there's black-eyed Susans. Go out and find some. Go out and find a black-eyed Susan right now on the river trail. 75% decline. Nobody is tracking these species. They are getting quickly replaced by invasives. And who is spreading the invasives in a very efficient manner? The Parks Department. It is an absolute disaster. I'm in contact with people at the state level and at Michigan State University, good friend of mine, Phyllis Higman, from the Michigan Natural Features Inventory, and they are as freaked out about this as I am. However, they're in meetings and offices all day. They're not out there, boots on the ground, counting these species and seeing what's happening. I would love for the city council to come with me and do a walk on the river trail, and let me show you. You need to see it with your own eye, because when those species are gone, what else leaves? Anybody know? The bugs. The bugs will leave. The animals will leave. The deer cannot eat that creeping thistle that has quickly replaced the bee balm on the river trail. The speed at which it is happening is of the greatest concern to all of my friends that study ecology. It is happening at lightning speed. All the road constructions on I-69, drive down where they did the construction, and you will see white, sweet clover, tall and full of thousands of seeds. If they mow that, those seeds get dispersed in a very fast manner. This'll happen before people even know it, and it's gonna be an absolute disaster for ecology. So I am raising awareness about this issue. I am working on it directly, and I'm hoping that maybe we can all do an invasive species pull, get involved. There's the Wild Tight Nursery in Mason, where you can buy native grasses, native plants, redo your lawns. So your code compliance people that are so concerned about weeds, do they even know about the invasive species problem? There's Japanese knotweed in my neighborhood. I've never seen it before. It's happening really, really fast. So I'm gonna try to get more involved. I'm feeling a little better with my health lately, and I want to keep showing up for the plants and the people.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, and then Ross Fisher.
Okay. Well, in general, I do support the idea of going to this public safety facility thing. I am disappointed, I will say, that we are going to spend money to buy land when we have land right next door, that we are gonna spend money to start from scratch when we have a facility that we could renovate. I think that we need to be looking more closely at those expenditures and looking at ways to reduce that 30-year term, that $175 million. I do not think that the public is able to accept that. I think we need to do this project in stages, as I've mentioned several times, and I think that we have to be very aware that even after this project, we still have the city hall to deal with and the vacant police facility that will be next door to city hall. So again, I'd like to suggest a solution there. If we are vacating the police station and we're reducing the facility's footprint here, bring the staff here down to three or floor, three or four floors. Develop the remaining floors into for-purchase penthouse apartments, luxury apartments, the most valuable real estate in the city of Lansing. Use the facility next door to have a separate entrance and lobby concierge service. Turn a floor into a library. Turn a floor into a meeting event space. Turn a floor into a gym. Turn a floor into a laundry room. Turn a floor into a coffee shop. Turn that whole building into amenities for the luxury townhouse, penthouse apartments that you could put in this building. That's a possible solution. It may not be one you want to hear, but it's out there, and it's a, it's a possibility, and I hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ross Fisher, followed by Scott Roy.
Good evening. My name is Ross Fisher. I live on the east side in the First Ward. I first off want to thank council for voting to tell the Michigan Legislature to repeal the 1931 abortion law. I think that is a good message to send to our state. I do think it's very relevant, and I want to make the public aware, that the Lansing City Attorney, Jim Smirica, has for a number of years been on the board of Pregnancy Center in, of Greater Lansing, I should say Pregnancy Services of Greater Lansing, which is a pro-life center. I think that should concern everyone. You can simply go on Google and read some reviews of some of the people and their experiences they've had there. It really concerned me. And so I think some, with having someone in this powerful position, the highest-paid position in our city government, we should be very concerned that, with his involvement in that organization, and be asking a lot more questions as we go forward. And, you know, I personally am not comfortable with having a city attorney who is affiliated with any kind of organization like that. I also wanted to say that I've, I've lived in this community now for seven years, and I love it here. And I've planned to spend the rest of my life here. And I'm often very disappointed at the actions of our city government, though. And I think one thing that is becoming more and more apparent is that we need some deep structural changes here in the city. And until we really look into those things and, and make some of those structural adjustments to our city, we're gonna be running into a lot of the same problems. And a lot of the people that came here tonight, I think, share, share those views, and we're looking for, for ways that we can address that. And I often don't have a lot of hope in politics and our city government, but with everyone that's been here tonight and that will continue to be here, that's what really gives me hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Roy, followed by Charlotte Burnett.
Hello. I'm Scott Leroy, the Deputy Circuit Court Administrator. I oversee the Circuit Court's Juvenile Division. On the ballot August 2nd is the question whether Ingham County's Juvenile Justice Millage should be renewed. Even though the millage has been around for 20 years, I think it's important to note a couple of things at tonight's meeting. The millage leveraged a state childcare fund generates over $10 million for juvenile justice-related programming. Of significant note is that Juvenile Justice Millage funds the Ingham County Youth Center, a 24-bed short-term detention facility, and the Ingham County Family Center that serves nearly 100 justice-involved youth daily, both facilities located here in the city of Lansing. Through the millage, the Circuit Court committed itself to comprehensively and repeatedly evaluating its juvenile justice system and instituting evidence-based improvements. The court uses a risk assessment tool and staff training format designed by the renowned University of Cincinnati Corrections Institute, has implemented its, and has its implementation of these regularly reviewed by a team from the Michigan State University School of Criminal Justice. Since the millage was first passed by voters, the annual number of juvenile delinquency petitions has fallen from 1,820 years ago to less than 400 now. During that time, the above-millage-supported programming and others have been in place with the goal to reduce delinquency and improve pre-treatment outcomes for those who have become involved in the juvenile justice system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Charlotte Burnett, followed by Bruce Scott.
Hello, everyone. My name is Charlotte Burnett. I have a doctorate in Governance and Human Security from the University of Massachusetts, and my focus has always been on safe migration. I realize that you have a really hard task ahead of you. You hear all of the citizens' complaints, and it often is taxing for you emotionally and physically. I understand, because I've worked as a peacekeeper for the United Nations Relief and Works Agency in Israel and Palestine. I was a basic needs assessor in Liberia during Ebola. I came back in 2019 because I was born and raised here in Lansing, Michigan. In 2021, I started the AMoja House. We help people access housing, transitional housing particularly. We have been able to do this without any assistance or funding, because we use a mutual aid model. This is counter to the current system that usually costs around $80,000 a year to house one homeless person for a year. So I know when I get people from the shelter and I hear them discuss their issues with the current system, that they are not lying to me, because they live with me. They live with me and my son. They tell me how they've lived in houses for years with mold problems, with boarded-up windows, how they've called code compliance and had work orders sent in. I didn't always believe everything they told me, until I was asked to go and look at LHC property, in which I have seen the inside of dozens of homes now, and I can confirm what they have been saying to me, that the city has been unable to fulfill its code compliance. We do not have enough funding, and we do not have enough staff. And this is absolutely ridiculous when people are actually dying. So when we talk about allocating millions of dollars to a new city hall, and I stand in this room and I don't see any black mold, I don't see shattered windows, I don't see children having issues breathing, I have a problem. I am angry. When I hear from my residents that shelters force them to do religious types of Bible studies to be able to sit in shelter, that they have to volunteer to get food, that is human trafficking. That is slavery. That should be your issue. When I hear to them that they come to me and I say, hey, here are some issues that need to be changed in your behavior, and they cry and say, are you throwing me out? Because everyone keeps throwing me out. When I get people who have medical conditions like HIV or POTS where they faint and they're told that just shelters can't keep them because they're medical liabilities, so they're thrown into the streets, that's your issue. These are your people. What are you here for if not to protect them from these systems? I will be back, and I will talk about this every single meeting if I have to. I will miss work at 8:30 in the morning to go to the ad hoc housing committee meetings to make sure that this is taken care of. Thank you.
Next, we have Bruce Scott, followed by Larry Hutchinson.
I just want to thank everybody for being here. I remember when I used to come down here, but it was in a different building over by West Junior with Frank Curtis. He passed away now. A moment of silence for him. I hear people saying that they, they tired. I'm disgusted in the city. I've been racially discriminated against with Wright Tree Service, unemployment, saying I owe them $44,000. General Motors just fired me a couple of weeks ago, said I was in there stealing. Stealing. Anybody back here that know me, I ain't never stole nothing. If I wanted something from their person, I would take it from them, or they would, I would make them give it to me. Since my youth, I've changed my ways a lot. I started a nonprofit organization called Why Haven't I, for whatever your why is. I'm trying to teach children, the youth, how to be computer coders, because that's fun to me now, not being a bad person anymore. I'm a business owner, Unique Movers and Solutions. I don't know if you've heard about us, Christians, professional lawn care, and snow removal. I don't know if you've heard of us before. Mayor, I met you at the Lugnut Stadium. You had a wardrobe malfunction, and I came and told you about it and helped you out, and you got yourself together. I, I almost got into a fight with a guy who offered me a job at a, I don't even want to bring their name up and give them no publicity. to bring their name up and give them no publicity, but he tore my resume up, probably because I had Senator Beard on there as a reference, probably because I had Roberta Stanley on there as a reference. I'm tired. I'm disgusted in the city of Lansing. The owner of the peanut shop, I don't know if she retired now, she called the police on me, which I got a gun case for, because I was protecting a retired police officer who hired me to take him to a real estate guru online, whatever he was doing. I was chauffeuring him and the owner of the police, the owner of the peanut shop called the police on me. They arrested me. This is my evidence right here that I didn't do anything wrong, but even when I paid for the lawyer from Foster and Swift, he didn't care. He just took my money. I should have checked to see how many wins he had versus his losses before I hired him. I am tired and I'm disgusted in the city of Lansing, East Lansing. Treat me more better than Lansing do and I grew up out here.
Thank you. Is Larry Hutchinson still here? Larry Hutchinson and then Michael Lynn, Jr.
local media, honorable residents, residents of the great and beautiful city of Lansing, Michigan, citizens of the United States and the world. I'm Larry Hutchinson, Green Party nominee for Michigan Secretary of State. Let's give it up for Cassidy Hutchinson. Woo! That's a patriot right there, baby. Cassidy Hutchinson for president. I don't know if she's my cousin or not, but I love that name. Mr. President, I rise and extend to myself as much time as I may consume to extend and revise my remarks. Mr. President, I call your attention to the packet I gave the council. It's a transcript of my, from University of Michigan, Flint. And if you could scroll down to my top grade, which is an A+ in debate, and go down to Communication Law where I got an A-. Now let's go over here to this article over here from the Lansing City Post, which got me banned from the debate a year ago while I was running for mayor. It says here that the comments may be offensive. To who? A three-year-old? And then the one here, it's on June 9th. And you know they put out an art, a full-page art, a full-page thing with everybody else's picture on there excluding mine. So, my first debate, I got slammed on my head. That's true. And I learned words like turn and pull. You mean to the left or to the right? I didn't know what they were doing. They're speed reading and they brought all their information there. Suitcases full of stuff. I know now it was just pageantry to psych me out and they did. But now I know the game. It says here in the June, in the June 9th article, "Mr. Hutchinson will not be allowed to attend in accordance with legal advice." Let me interpret that for you. They called their lawyers and said, "Do we have to have him?" And the lawyer said, "No." And they went along with it. And this, what did they say? Revoked my thing. Okay. Bone thugs coming to Flint, I mean coming to, I was just in Flint, got a little dusted up and we're like, coming to Lansing on the 29th. Free Brittany, free Larry Hoover. And I'm out.
Thank you. Next we have Michael Lynn, Jr., followed by Linda Applin and...
So, my third time up here, I think. Second. Man, God just puts something on my heart so heavy, man. Like, I've waited, I think, 26 years to say what I'm about to say right now and I didn't want to do it from this podium, but Scott, I really apologize for that lapse in judgment 26 years ago, man, and I haven't seen you since that day. But it's been on me heavy. I talk about it all the time. It's really something that affected me because I am in the world of no harm these days and I just feel blessed to be able to get that moment to speak to him right now and just to say that to you and hopefully I can speak to you after this point. Let me gather. Bruce spoke on, you know, harmful ways and the things that he had done in the past and so on and so forth, and I've, I've never shied away from explaining that's who I was when I was younger. I thought I could probably, maybe God put on my heart to set an example for you all that we can make mistakes and come back from it. We talk about equity in a mistake that was just made by passing that ARPA funds. I just keep thinking about like, you know, Brian T. Jackson having maybe 10 apples in front of him and Mayor Shore having none, and I walk in with a big bucket of apples and I throw them right in Brian's lap and make way and explain why that's equitable. And that's really what was happening. Carrington spoke on the organization that didn't get any money through this process and I felt like as somebody who's out here grinding day in and day out, man, putting my life on the line for this city in every aspect of it, as Jerry said, I lost my job advocating for people of this city. My wife, you know, all of us have really given it all, you know, not to be added into that process of conversation was, was disheartening. And I don't want to take away from any of the organization to do good work out here, but again, equity matters and if we're not understanding the term when we say equity, you know, some groups get money all day, every day. When we got millions of more dollars, we don't just throw it on who's comfortable, who already's got their information on the books. So when we talk about this process going forward with, with the mayor, and I'll speak directly to you, you know, we got to put some things aside at this point, man, and figure out best ways we can work for this city. This sounds crazy coming from me because I just, I just figured out you don't like me from the damn jam. But we got to do some things differently, man. We can't just keep doing what we do, what we've been doing. And I think that's a lot of what Jody came up here and spoke on, is this, these groups are going to have people from all, all aspects of life and to try to do what the council and this administration hasn't been able to succeed in doing for one reason or the other. None of us have to be concerned about votes so we can work passionately from our heart. And I'm hoping that you all can find it in yours to right some wrongs and mistakes that have been made and let's move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Next we have Linda Applin. Linda, you filled out a couple sheets, you just get to speak once, followed by Linda is Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Before my time goes, why can I only speak once? I had a number of subjects I needed to discuss. There are no provisions, regulations, or rules that you have articulated that indicate that I should only speak once. I have a number of different subjects and I would like to be afforded the full opportunity to speak on those subjects.
So, Linda, if I could just address that very quickly. So, what we're trying to do with regard to, you know, following of procedure with regard to public comment, is to ensure that everybody, particularly when you have a night like, like this, when you have so many individuals that are here. We have lost a few because of the hour of the night, but we certainly, number one, respect what you have to say and we certainly want you to be able to provide your input, but we do limit it to three minutes at the, at the end of the meeting to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to address the city council. If there were things that were on the agenda that you wanted to speak to, there was also an opportunity in the beginning of the meeting, as there always is, to, to address those issues. And then of course, post-meeting, if you want to email me, call me, you know I will absolutely onboard those issues to the rest of the council and make sure that they have those and then we can bring those up at the next meeting if necessary.
Yeah, well, boy, you've been running the meetings. I don't have enough time to do all of that because you have a ton of various issues. And first of all, you've been stealing money from me as a resident of Lansing that lives in Eaton County. You're taking my tax dollars. You're funding the zoo and I do not get the same benefits that Ingham County people get. Yet you are taking my tax dollars in terms of I live in Eaton County and I want the same benefits that anybody from Ingham County gets. That's my first problem. My second problem is the loss of power. I think it was Thursday. Okay. There was no way to contact the border, water, and light. The phone system just simply went around in a circle and had, and they were trying to get me to pay a bill that I didn't owe any money on. One tape recording where everything was circular, it was how do you can pay a bill? No information on the loss of power or how long it would occur was available. In fact, all you got was this recording.
Can I stop you just for a minute? We did, we did stop the time. We're having a little bit of trouble hearing you, so if you could maybe step just a little closer, maybe pull down this mic just a little bit down.
Oh, they told me not to bow to the mic.
Just pull it a little bit toward you. Yeah, Jane, if you want to do that for us, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
That's better. Thank you.
My complaint was there was no, oh, this was the border water line. There was no way to contact the border, water, and light and find out what in the world was happening in this situation. I had three blackouts, three, and I could not contact them. I have no idea what they were doing, but they need to get rid of that recording situation and have a real human being in terms of that. My second issue on this is Hunter's Park. There was raw sewage flowing into the Grand River. Did all of you know about that? Did your park director tell you? In terms of that, the park was closed for two or three days. I know because I go and open it up early in the morning. I do not know. I guess it was fixed. However, I do not know how well that fix has been. I do not know whether or not sewage flow is being monitored. And I have one word to say to you about that. Flint, Michigan, I truly hope you do not put us in that type of situation. Third, oh, I've already told you about the, the other issue I have is housing. I am extremely concerned in terms of what is happening with housing. You are asking me to approve a $170 million bond and you have no plan in terms of how we are to address individuals in the low income. It makes no sense to me. I don't want my tax money to go for that and I cannot figure out how in the world I would manage to support it. My third complaint, suggesting to the city, is that you need to provide Section 8 recipients with an attorney so that when they are, when they have issues with the landlord, they can actually go to court. Because if you've got a Section 8, you do not have enough money to go to court. Otherwise, you would not be a Section 8 person in terms of that. The other, and also if they need money to put in escrow so that they can get things fixed, that should be given to them. You should not deny them these rights.
Thank you.
And I would appreciate in the future if I had enough time.
Thank you. Next we have Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by William Lawrence.
Farhan Sheikh Omar, I just want to know, why do we do everything backwards in this city? The mayor's fresh-off reelection, where he spent $300,000 to win his seat and now you guys have handed him $1.9 million, almost $2 million, to pretty much return favors that was given to him while he was running for office. So how does that make sense? Where is the accountability? Where is the transparency? You guys speak for us when you're dealing with the mayor. You're supposed to take our questions and take it to him and then find the answers for us. You guys haven't done that. All I see from this city council is go along, get along. Everybody wants to get along, nobody wants to do the work. If you don't want to do the work, don't run for your seat, because we want people who are going to engage us and hold this mayor accountable and hold each other accountable. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, Andy, good seeing you again, pal. Your department continues to allow landlords to rent out homes without any regards for safety codes or regulations. In 2020, the city issued pink tags to more than 800 apartments or properties in Lansing, according to reports in the Lansing State Journal. Two years later, nothing has changed. In fact, a toddler was killed less than a month ago in this city and the house that toddler and his family was living in never passed inspection. In fact, it wasn't even licensed for that landlord to rent out that property to that family. A toddler is dead because your department failed to do its job. A department that we're funding has failed to protect this community. Residents are paying hundreds of dollars for properties invested with rats, cockroaches, mice, exposed wiring, holes in the walls or ceilings, leaking plumbing, lack of running hot and cold water, and smoke alarms that don't work. Landlords are making profit off of others' poverty and desperation, collecting rent for properties in which no one should have to live in. This is immoral. It's inhumane. It's un-American. So my question to you is, where is the red line? When will you guys intervene? When will we see accountability? A toddler is dead. Before that, a mother and her son died. Where is the red line? There hasn't been a red line. The fact is, our resident, this community, has been very vocal. However, our pleas seem to have fallen on deaf ears. You guys continue to ignore us. So, the fact is, America is a, America is a first-world country, but we continue to get treated as third-world citizens. Mr. Mayor, no more cutting ribbons. Do your work. Tell your department to do its work.
Thank you. Stop with the cutting ribbons. Appreciate you. And our final speaker tonight is William Lawrence.
William Lawrence from Ward 4. Councilman Jackson and Daniels, thank you for your vote today. Really, it doesn't go unnoticed. Wish we could have had one more. I just want to speak on the state of the city administration and the conduct of the mayor, a few things I've observed. First thing is, the first time you talk to anybody involved in local government, whether that's people on this council, county government level, various agencies, community boards, what you hear again and again is how difficult it is, how impossible it is actually, to work with this administration. Paperwork, funds, data, information of all kinds are not getting where they need to go. The city staff is absolutely hollowed out. The HR department can't seem to make a hire. Tenants, as Farhan said, are suffering for the lack of protections like code enforcement and other protections the city is supposed to be providing. It actually seems like, and lots of people have said it, the PR department is the only one that's working in the Shore administration. Now, the first time you talk to anybody on council, the first thing you hear is how little power you have. And unfortunately, it seems that you're pleased to exercise even less power than you actually do have. I learned recently that the city is operating without an internal auditor, which is actually one of the only staff positions which is mandated in the city charter. I read the charter because Councilmember Brown said you should read the charter. I found out you're supposed to have an auditor working for you. You don't have one. Because that person quit. Because, they quit twice actually, because they were being stonewalled by the Shore administration. Why is this not a scandal? I don't know how you managed to do it in broad daylight. The city attorney, I'm actually beginning to realize, his name came up today, is maybe the most powerful person in the city besides the mayor. And he sits and his staff sit in these meetings and they tell the council what you can and cannot do. And you just sit there and take it. And sometimes there are questions, but you don't seem to get organized to actually get another opinion and have a more expansive sense of what the council is able to do and what the city as a whole is able to do as a citizens. And Councilman Jackson, I really appreciate you for pointing that out today, the discrepancies in what the city attorney was even saying about the ARPA funds. And so I just want to ask you, what is the point in even having a council if you're not willing to exercise the only power that you do have, which is to provide a check, provide some accountability on the mayor? And I, I get it that it's easier to do nothing. It's easier to not rock the boat, to kind of slide along, hope you can get the donor list in the end, when he's on his way, he's running for senate. But that is dishonorable. It's dishonorable conduct and we see it when you decide to just go along and it does not go unnoticed. And honestly, if he goes on to the senate, well, maybe we'll get to watch him play the same charade there and you'll regret it because the results are embarrassing and he'll embarrass us there just like he embarrasses us here. And it's time for you to decide who you're working for as a council. It's time for us as a people to decide how to represent ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, at 9:18, we are adjourned.